I don't do that very often. This is meeting number five, it is March 5th, 2018, and it's 5:30 PM. We are in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. Would you all please stand and join us in our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kathleen, put your roll ball, please.
Phillips?
Here.
Graham Murray?
Here.
McCambell?
Here.
Brinker?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Okay. First tonight, we have a Mayor's Award. And these are the special times that we really enjoy, that I know personally I enjoy being on the council and being able to do special things. And as a mayor, I get to recognize special people in the community. And tonight, I have such an honor to recognize somebody that's been such a hard worker, that has been committed to their job, that's been a smiling face. I don't know, I don't know how many times I've been in that building, but every time I go in, I'm always greeted with the same smiling face and a hello. They couldn't get any better person to greet somebody or greet an employer, to have somebody at a door than you. When I grow up, I want to be just like you. But, that being said, let's go ahead and do this. Glad to have you here tonight, my friend. Be it known on behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. That's you. Your commitment to this community and your job over the years, your smiling face greeting every person that you see, and your warm heart, that can't be denied. You helped make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On March 5th, 2018, this Mayor's Award is presented to Jesse Petty. Come on down. Put it in a special place. Or, or not. We all want to get a picture taken. Why don't you guys come on and get in? Get in here, get in here. I'll call you. Thank you. Congratulations. I asked you if you would come to the, whatever that thing is with the microphone in front of it, and if you'd like to have something to say.
I'm now begun talking much, but thanks.
Thank you. Man, after you open up a meeting like that, you just want to close it out, huh? Good night, everybody!
Yep.
No? Okay. Still have some business to take care of. Those that, if you do want to leave, that came for Jesse, you guys can go ahead and do that. You don't have to sit around for this. Thank you. Again, my friend, thank you for coming down. So good to see you. What's that? Yeah, yeah, we should've. Yeah, no doubt. You're already standing up.
Thank you. I'm super here today, I feel all right.
Yeah, no doubt, no doubt. All right. Again, thank you, Jesse, for coming down. Tonight, next, before we get into the meeting, we have, I have other special guests that are very dear friends. They bring excitement to the city of Burlington. They have a special event that they hold every year that, it's getting pretty close, and I'll tell ya, I'm just so looking forward to it. It's one of our best events in the city. But we have tonight, the Midwest Magic, and I believe they also brought something with them. So, at this time, would the Midwest Magic come on up?
Calling him out already?
They're calling him out already.
Calling out the chief already, wow.
Nice trophy.
Thank you for us being here today. We appreciate you guys doing that for us. Don't matter.
Don't matter. Woo!
We don't win five in a row against Chief Field Cecile. We don't win five in a row against Chief Field Cecile. He don't have a chance.
We should have had that basketball.
I just want to thank everybody, and if it wasn't for the community's support in this event, you know, what started out just, you know, four or five years ago with 75 people at our first game, has grown over to 1,500 the last couple of years. And it's, it's more than just a basketball game, it's, you know, excitement. I, I tell people, it's WrestleMania, Super Bowl, and the World Series, all into one. And it's, it's pretty remarkable. And I think, you know, what's that?
We do have tickets, too, he wants me to say.
But, you know, it's a two-hour event. It's two hours to forget about everything that's wrong in the world, and it's two hours to be able to witness everything that's right in the world. So, I invite everybody to come out, and I feel bad for Doug Beard because, you know, with his last year, gonna retire, still can't win a championship. Thank you.
If I didn't buy you tickets, we'd be in the back all night.
Again, I'm so looking forward to this. They said they're gonna put the smackdown on the police department, five weapons in a row. So, I just want to thank Mike the Fridge for coming down, and Terry the Freezer. Good to see you guys. I am so looking forward to this. All right. Next on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda. All matters listed under Item 1, consent agenda having been discussed or considered to be the routine, I'm sorry, considered to be routine by the city council, will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussions of these items. If a discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent tonight, we have the usual finances, miscellaneous minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer liquor wine and cigarettes, reports and bonds. We have resolutions. The first is resolution approving final acceptance and final payment for the 2017 erosion mitigation at corner of North Street and North Fourth Street. The second is resolution approving the purchase of right-of-way and a temporary construction easement for 3,200 Agency Street, pin number 11-31-301-009, and 11-31-301-013, for the 2018 Agency Street widening project East End. The third is resolution approving the purchase of a temporary construction easement for 3,120 Agency Street, pin number 11-31-326-002, for the 2018 Agency Street widening project East End. The fourth is resolution approving the purchase of a temporary construction easement for 3,135 Agency Street, pin number 11-31-376-008, for the 2018 Agency Street widening project East End. The fifth is resolution approving the purchase of a temporary construction easement for 3,140 Agency Street, yes, I do need to read these, pin number 11-31-326-004, for the 2018 Agency Street widening project East End. The sixth is a resolution approving the purchase of a temporary construction easement for 3,150 Agency Street, pin number 11-31-301-006, for the 2018 Agency Street widening project East End. The seventh is a resolution approving the purchase of a right-of-way and a temporary construction easement for 3,155 Agency Street, pin number 11-31-361-003, for the 2018 Agency Street widening project East End. The eighth is a resolution approving the purchase of right-of-way and a temporary construction easement for 3,220 Agency Street, pin number 11-31-301-014, for the 2018 Agency Street widening project East End. Ninth is a resolution approving the purchase of a temporary construction easement for 3,245 Agency Street, pin number 11-31-351-004, and 11-31-351-010, for the 2018 Agency Street widening project East End. The tenth is a resolution of support for a workforce house incentive, a house tax incentive program project by Park West LLC. The eleventh is a resolution approving a gift agreement for property located east of 1230 and 1308, I'm sorry, 1230 through 1308, North Sixth Street for Burlington, Iowa. We have a public hearing set for March 19th. The first is a consideration of a lease agreement with Des Moines County Humane Society for the use of the facility at 2,000 North Roosevelt Avenue. The second is consideration of plans and specs for the 2018 park lot improvements. The third is consideration of plans and specs for the 2018 Mount Pleasant Street HMA overlay. And then the fourth is consideration of transit grant application. And we have one appointment. Mayor Prochett?
Yes. We have Ann March going to be filling a spot on the Law Right Housing Agency, and then also reappointing Edward Crowe for Law Right Housing Agency as well.
So anybody from the audience that would like to have any of these items removed from the consent agenda? Mr. Shea Han?
Leon Shea Han, I won't disappoint you, Mayor, number 10.
Number 10.
On the resolutions.
You did not disappoint. Anybody else from the audience? Counsel?
I'm good.
Can I get a motion?
I move to approve all listed under Item 1 consent agenda.
Second.
Except, except for?
Oh, except for.
Number 10.
Except for, is it?
Number 10.
Resolution, except for resolution number 10.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Kathleen?
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Brinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay. First is a consideration of general obligation loan agreement and a principal amount not to exceed $8,500,000.
Part of the process that we get to go through with our budget is to do, essentially, this is on the pre-levy portion, we have to borrow funds for our CIP approved projects that require bond financing. The CIP included bond financing for several different projects. Our general street overlay program, $1.4 million. Miscellaneous street projects, $150,000. Mount Pleasant Street Bridge Rehab, $4,350,000. Central Street Bridge Repairs, $350,000. And finishing up the cost of the flood wall for this phase, the current phase that we're on, $1,900,000. The loan agreement allows us to be able to cover those. Those are all general obligation bonds. Portion of them, the Mount Pleasant Street Bridge, Central Street Bridge are anticipated to be paid for with TIF funds. The flood wall with sales tax increment from the state portion of growth in sales tax collections over the next 20 years will be the source of that, as well as the other phases of the flood wall project. We have several steps that we have to go through as part of bonding. I mentioned pre-levy. The first payment, principal and interest, is included in the budget, FY19 budget. Since we don't have a, a final bond agreement, we haven't sold bonds, that won't be until April, I think it's about April 1st, where the actual bond sale occurs, and those are approved at the first April council meeting. We don't have finalized rates, but we have to have a pre-levy, an estimated amount of principal and interest that which would be included in the budget document as part of our debt service and paid for out of the debt service levy this next year. The estimate that is included in here, in your proceedings, is $761,389 for that pre-levy amount, a major, a good chunk of which is coming out of other operating funds other than the actual debt service levy, but they are all part of the GOB. One of the things that we've done along the way is go to Standard and Poor's for a rating to have these, the bonds rated. Sent that to you earlier today. We got our rating back from Standard and Poor's. They maintained our A-plus rating on these bonds, as well as our, our overall GO long-term rating at that A-plus stable level.
I thought we had got a tip on that.
What's that?
I said I was kind of disappointed, I thought we had got a tip on that, but...
They, they did talk in there, if you read through the narrative, about a lot of the factors that impact where our rating stands. They talk about general economic conditions within the community. They would talk about, even though we are pretty much at full employment, they would talk about a challenged local environment in terms of median family income, and what our valuation is, is lower than what comparable communities would be at on average. Talks about the strength of our liquidity, which is in pretty good shape. They do talk about another challenge being that we do have a fairly high debt load. We are still well below what the statewide allowance is. We use, we're at about 70% of debt capacity, but from a ratings agency perspective, they don't like to see what our debt load is. With that, that's really about it for this. What you see on here, too, is a preliminary offering statement, which gives an overview of where the city's current financials are. It outlines what the project funds will be used for, which is streets, bridges, and the flood wall. And just really gives an idea for those who will invest potentially in these bonds, what, what our ability to repay is.
Let's go to the audience. Anybody have any questions from the audience, concerns?
Question, not a comment. On the financing for the flood wall, what part of that has already been expended and what is future? Can you enlighten us on that?
We borrowed $5.2 million on the first phase. I think we've expensed about $4 million to date. It's in that neighborhood. We still have, well, the 1.9 million is, that, that's the, about what we're gonna need to finish out this phase.
You're talking what's currently under construction?
Through June, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just curious what the grant funding was.
Name and address.
Kelly Hall, 816 Valley. I know there was a fairly large grant that the flood wall received.
That was a sales tax increment. It was designed specifically for flood protection. The state set aside 50 million a year, I think, over the, on a statewide basis, I'm not sure if I'm getting the correct amounts.
60 million?
I was thinking 50 million a year for 20 years that they set aside. We've had, oh, there are about 10 communities across the state who have taken advantage of that, that's fully allocated. Ours and the city of Des Moines took up the last portion of it.
Would it be possible to get a breakdown of where those funds have been allocated?
To, to us? What we have?
Well, yeah, what, what has become grant funding, what the delta is, how that is, is transparent?
So the city received a 22, $26.2 million award from the state over the course of 20 years. With that, we put together an estimated project amount of 22 million in actual construction costs, and the other, about 4 million was, was interest and other, other miscellaneous fees with financing the project. The project is over four phases. This is the first of four phases to be completed. The second phase is designed to be, doggone it, pump stations. We have two pump stations that are designed to be done.
Is that in writing anywhere?
What's that?
I mean, can we get that in writing anywhere, how all that transpires?
Charlie has a breakdown. That was approved, the council approved that funding application in two and a half years ago, I think, is about the timing of when that was submitted and our funding was based off of. But yeah, you can get it from Charlie.
We good? No questions? I see none. Counsel?
Good.
Good.
Move to close?
Second?
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Brinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye. Here I have a resolution expressing intent to enter into a loan agreement approving preliminary official statement for general obligation corporate purpose bonds, series 2018A, and authorizing debt service levy.
Second.
Thank you, sir. Kathleen?
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Brinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
You threw me off there with the, I just picked up on that Graham Murray. All right. So, I know that, Chief, you're probably thinking we forgot about you, but we didn't. Can we go ahead and put that up, please? Tonight, we do want to recognize the chief. Before we go any further, this is, oh yes, my friends. This is the one that made Mary fall in love. We want to recognize him tonight again. And our chief is...
Solidarity, chief.
I can't do it. Mine doesn't even want to stay on, it refuses. It refuses to stay on.
Is that a pet, chief?
That's a, that's a baby deer.
Is that legal?
See, not only is he manly enough to kill deer, but see, when he finds a little baby, you know, he'll protect the little baby deer.
He probably shot her mom.
He probably killed the mama. But anyways, but anyways, we're gonna go ahead and judge him tonight. We're gonna start, we started with you last time?
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna start with Mr. Brinker.
What's our scaling?
We'll work our way, one to 10.
One to 10.
Is this yours? Here, you can borrow my chalk. I'm gonna give you a three, chief, and that's for the deer.
Wow, man. I thought the deer was better than that.
Um, I'm gonna have to give you a nine, because it's so cute.
I'm gonna give you a 10 on that, just because that's pimpin' class, my friend. You know, if I'd have known, if I could have got a picture taken with a little baby deer, I'd do that. I think we need to transpose me into that, and maybe chicks will start digging me. That's definitely a tip, my friend.
I'm, chief, I gotta go with the three, because, you know, I'm thinking more NASCAR right now, and I'm not really, you know, Bambi, you're consoling her after maybe you took her mother off this earth. I can't get with it.
Chief, I'm giving you a four. That's because my stash is cooler than your stash. My stash is cooler than yours. My stash is cooler 'cause my stash is green, my stash is cooler than yours.
That hurt.
Anybody's wondering, they're probably thinking, why are we doing this? Because the chief is leaving us. And he's going into retirement, we thought, man, we're just gonna kick this guy all the way out the door. We've just had such good times together. Chief, if you would, we've got one gift for you tonight.
This is probably hurting our chances of hiring a replacement.
Chief, again, we know you want to disappear. Last time it came out bad, so...
We grew this all the time.
Make sure you disappear in the eye of a bunch. Remember, remember, do I mean?
Thank you.
Yeah, I do need to start.
Okay.
Well, as you know, I'm an avid hunter, but that was an act of bringing something back to life. And just so you know, that's what hunters do, and they're all about conservation and preserving life, unlike what I was born. So, thank you.
Thanks, thank you. I stand corrected. Okay. This is consideration of an agreement with Burlington Community School District relative to use of Dankworth and Crapo Park tennis courts.
Have a motion to close?
No.
No, too early? Sorry.
Mr. Tisland?
This was a previously scheduled item for a public hearing, I know there was some discussion on it, but the public hearing was for consideration of an agreement with Burlington Community School District. So counsel would need to vote on this agreement based on the publication, so they can either vote to move forward and approve this agreement substantially as it is, or if the majority's not in favor, not to vote to approve the agreement and bring back a new agreement item at a future meeting. Just want to clarify that, 'cause got a lot of questions about what we can, changes or amendments to this, and it was published as an agreement with the Burlington School District. So, this agreement would provide for the contribution of 50,000 from the Burlington Schools to the city of Burlington towards the improvement of the tennis courts at Dankworth and Crapo Park in exchange for priority, priority use times over a 10-year period. The agreement does not specifically, or doesn't specifically make provision for the continued use of the courts for the meets by the joint tennis program of Burlington Notre Dame School and West Burlington Independent School District. So they continue to be allowed to schedule, I believe it's up to six meets a year through this agreement into the future, so seven meets a year, so that they are, continue can have their home meets at this, these courts. Burlington Schools came to us with this solution to both of our issues. They have some tennis court issues at the high school. Our tennis courts are in need of repair as well, and it's been a good working relationship with Burlington School District on this, as well as working with the Notre Dame AD and through some of their questions and concerns as well. So, I think we've worked very well with them to get to this point. Some of the issues, if you haven't been out there, this is Dankworth Tennis Courts. Just for reference, some of the cracks that are extending through a lot of the courts, that's, I guess, this pen here on the right, just to show a dimension of what the cracks are. They continue to form kind of throughout the majority of the courts there at Dankworth, and then Crapo is kind of the other court that looks a lot worse, that needs the repainting. Some of the cracks are a little bigger there as well, and that hasn't been improved as much as the Dankworth Courts. Dankworth is constructed in the early 70s, crack repairs in 2010, has two total overlays in its lifetime. Crapo is in the 30s, 40s, had an overlay in the 1980s, and some acrylic crack fill, but no other repairs. So, these are courts that have been around for a while and had some work done, but certainly in need of work now. I guess going through this, some of the discussion, a shared or equal use agreement would likely not involve some upfront funds from the schools, but would more likely involve setting a fee schedule for use of the courts with funds recouped over time. We did review some other communities. Tennis court agreements were typical. Generally involved a 2080 between public schools and cities or MOU for payment. There was quite a few examples of that in Iowa, ranging from Newton, Iowa City, Decora, Keyakuck, Knoxville, actually Northern, University of Northern Iowa, Cedar Falls, and their school all partnered on tennis courts, as well as Bettendorf. So the majority of those were 2080s or memorandums for payment on resurfacing costs between the school, public school and the cities. Staff does recommend approval of the agreement as presented. This is based on the focus of making improvements to the public tennis courts through this cost-sharing agreement with the public school district. This will allow the tennis courts to be improved and remain in quality safe condition for the foreseeable future, for use by the public and by the area schools. This is seen as, staff as a win for both parties to enable cities courts to be improved at a reduced cost for both entities, the city and the school. Parks Department and comprehensive plan goal is to provide quality services and facilities at a cost-effective manner. A lot of the guidance through that is looking at shared use agreements through other agencies, looking at creative ways to find funding for park improvement projects. We understand the budget constraints for all departments, especially quality of life items, and especially with some of the uncertainty with backfill and other budget constraints down the road, and feel this opportunity would benefit the community as a whole. If this agreement is not approved, we'd still have the same use of the courts by area schools, both Burlington High School and Notre Dame and West Burlington, but the improvements would not take place at this time. Staff has had multiple meetings and correspondence with Burlington Schools, and they have made great efforts to compromise on the agreement being presented, so that there would be a benefit to the city, other schools, and the residents of the community by ensuring the courts are improved over their current declining condition. As I mentioned, we also worked with the... As I mentioned, we also work with the A.D.s, both Burlington, Notre Dame, which is, the Notre Dame program is Burlington, Notre Dame, and West Burlington Independent School District, taking their input into consideration with this agreement. And this does ensure that they can continue to hold meets at the courts and allows for practice time after the Burlington School District. But it would be a change, as mentioned before, there had been use of the courts by Notre Dame, West Burlington in the past. Hasn't been a formal agreement. This did come up based on the need to make improvements to our courts. The school district, Burlington School Districts need to make improvements to their courts. What's the most cost-effective way in our community as a whole to do that going forward? And felt that this was an appropriate compromise to make improvements to our courts that are able to be used by other schools, by the community as a whole, by tennis groups, and ensure that they remain in a quality safe manner. So, with that, if you have any questions I can try and answer, we do have representatives from Burlington School on the agreement as well.
Okay, I see we have, I see we have some people here. I'm not sure how many of you are here for this, for this, for this issue. I am going to ask, though, if there are some people here that do have things to say that, that we don't double and triple down, that we try to be respectful at the time. So, is there anybody here that has any comments or concerns from the audience?
Jeremy Swink, 120 Golf Lane.
Usually that always happens to me.
I get it. I want to start off by thanking the council and the mayor for allowing me to speak, and thank you guys for everything you do for our schools and our community. We really do appreciate it. Before I start off, I want to kind of make it apparent and well-known that I'm a Burlington High School graduate, but right now I am the athletic director at Notre Dame High School. So, I'm a Burlington High School alum, very proud. Throughout my career at BHS, my family and myself were highly involved in all the sports BHS had to offer, including the tennis team. My brother and I played varsity tennis for Burlington all four years throughout high school, and we had a great experience at Burlington. And I do wish the same for all of the kids at Burlington right now involved with the tennis program. Towards the end of January, I received an email from the city. The city was requesting a meeting to discuss the Dankwart Tennis Court proposal. At that meeting, it was discussed that this project would take place in the fall of 2018. And at that meeting, Burlington made it apparent that they did not wish to use our courts for practice, but they did wish to use our courts for home meets. So, after that meeting, Burlington's A.D. and I, we sat down and we said, hey, we need to find a date where we can get together so we don't double book Dankwart Courts. A little background, our team, we have around 14 players on both our boys and our girls team, giving us just under 30 students on our team total. And our boys and our girls, we do practice together. Looking at our schedule, after we sat down and we looked at them, any time that there was a meet, that we both had a meet there, I switched it and I went to either a different date or I went to an away location. So, after altering our schedule a little bit to accommodate Burlington, for this year, we have six home meets and we only have two girls' home meets. And Eric, I do have a question for you. In the contract you were talking about, you said that we would have seven, the contract stated we would have seven home meets per year, is that correct? Okay, and it said that Burlington would have 14 home meets per year, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, and is that because of the financial contribution, they would have more home meets?
That's, when I asked you how many you'd need, you said seven, so that's what I put in the agreement.
Well, seven for, it's normally six for girls, six for boys, because we're allowed 12 home meets a year. So, we try and do half and half.
That was based specifically on me asking what number you needed, and that's, maybe there's misunderstanding there, but I asked that.
Yeah, it was misunderstood. We want at least six for each is what we're looking for, but I was, I was curious on that. So, anyway, at the end of our meeting at City Hall, Burlington's A.D. and I got together, so we tried to, we tried to find a date that we could get together to match our schedules side by side. We got to sit down, we matched our schedules side by side. At that meeting, which was in late February, or which was in early February, February 8th, we sat down, and then I found out that they wanted to use Dankwart Courts for the practice as well. At that point, I called both my coaches. I said, hey, here is what Burlington wishes to do for practices. Can we make this work? And both of my coaches had a major concern that, that wouldn't work. The only time Burlington gave us to practice was at 5:00 P.M. And I attempted to work with Burlington on multiple occasions to find a practice schedule that worked for both schools, but we cannot come to an agreement as Burlington wished to have Dankwart and BHS until five-ish each night. This is not an option for our kids. If this goes through, we'll have a handful of kids that will not be able to play tennis this year. Our team is used to having that practice lot at Dankwart, and they've had that for a number of years, going back even when I played at BHS. How it would work at BHS is the girls would practice right after school and the boys would follow around five-ish. I guess I just don't understand what the sudden urge is to have the BHS boys practice right after school as well, because that's not what they've done, at least from my knowledge. And I've heard a little bit, if the reason for moving over to Dankwart revolves around student safety, I'm all about student safety. That's my number one priority as an educator. But I've heard a few parents and players ask me, they've said, well, if Burlington's courts are unsafe for their boys to practice, what makes their courts safe enough for their girls? Or even enough, what makes their courts safe enough to send us over there to practice? And, and that was some questions that I really didn't have an answer for. And it is a concern of mine of the timing. We're made aware of this request extremely late with the season soon approaching. Tennis courts, they really don't fall apart overnight. This is something that I'm sure Burlington's courts were, they weren't good to start with. So, this is something that I think they could have looked at this past summer, this past fall, one month before the season. It's kind of real late in the game for us to switch our plans last minute and for our kids to switch our plans. Although I disagree with selling out the court to the highest bidder, if this is the direction the city wants to go in, then so be it. But Notre Dame, we're not swimming in money, but we weren't even really given an opportunity to fundraise whatsoever in regards to this. All said and done, I believe we all live in the same city, we're all part of the same community, and I think we're all in this together. And I don't think battling each other tooth and nail is going to do us any good. I think working together and understanding each other's points of view can be a lot more positive and beneficial. So, approving this agreement or contract is not working together. It's giving Notre Dame the leftovers. And by working together, I think we send a much stronger message to our students and our community. And I believe that message that we send to our students and our community is much more valuable than any dollar amount you guys can put out there. So, with that, does the council have any questions for me?
No. You answered all of my questions.
Mine as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jean Schnebacher, 2102 343rd Avenue, Weaver. I am an alumni of Burlington High School, highlight of which was representing Greyhounds at the state tournament in 1983 with my partner Lisa Snow. I've been an English teacher at West Burlington for 27 years, and I've been a coach, tennis coach for Notre Dame for seven. So, I've been in all three schools. Packers first, Bears next. You need to know where my alliances are. Okay? Then, then we can go forward. All right, for as long as I can remember, Notre Dame has had these courts. I appreciate letting me speak. It was really hard for me to sit back there last work during the work session and control myself. That little nice policeman was very helpful. I know what that deer felt like. So, thank you, thank you, thank you for giving me a few minutes of your time. I am here to save my tennis program. Frustrated with the situation from, from day one, that is, day one that I didn't know about, that was held meetings behind closed doors. I was only aware of the situation four weeks ago. Channels of commands were missed. The entire process truly has been a disaster. Situation should have been dealt with in an open and professional way with enough time for us to make other plans. I may have been still here arguing, you know, the philosophy of public property belonging to people for a price, but I wouldn't be here begging for fairness for my program, because that's what I am doing. I am begging you for fairness. Don't, don't harm my girls. And your decision, if you decide this, will harm them. And I just need you to know them a little bit, because they're not aligned on a budget. Lydia Becker? Lydia, stand up a minute. Skinny little kid, backhand crosscourt, is mean. She's not strong enough to get out of the van. We'll be at tennis courts, we'll be like, where's Lydia? Did anybody get Lydia out of the van? But she gets on the court, and man, she's, she's tough. Kennedy? Little tortoise of the team. Not that she's slow, because she gets to everything, but, but she just beats her opponent down, just one by one. And Claire? Backboard, backboard at the back. Great net player. Most of the time, we're waiting on the two of them to get done playing in their singles. McKenzie? She may be small, don't tell her that. She doesn't know. And she will run your butt all over the court. When we went to state last year, she cried from the provolone cheese section to the cashier, all the way, all, all the way. She, she did. Riley? Riley? She's a first-year tennis. She still thinks she plays volleyball. Sometimes she goes to the net with a racket in one and hand and the other, but man, this girl is passionate about everything she did. These girls made it to state last year. We got to the quarterfinals. We need every minute, every minute of practice to get there again. If you do this, I don't know if we will. We'll, we'll try. We're fighters. We want to go back next year. Thanks, thanks, ladies. You know, I know we've never had a formal, formal agreement. Thirty, thirty years ago, probably, I don't even know if there was a handshake involved, but this agreement has lasted several parks administrators, I don't know how many A.D.s, and so many coaches, I can't count. And that handshake or not handshake agreement, we've depended on. And I'm not saying that we have a right. I'm standing here in front of you, asking you to do the right thing, not, not because it's legal, but because it's right. You know, I think that after 30 years, my girls deserve to have a reasonable expectation that they would have a place to play tennis. That's reasonable. We were given four weeks. Right now, it's one week. I still don't know where we're going to play. I don't know what we're going to do. We have one week. Thirty years of prior commitment, four weeks. So, you know, if you have to do this, then please do it next year. Please respect that handshake made or not made 30 years ago. Give us one year to figure out our plans to rearrange our lives. We've got to have those practice times at Dankwart right after school. We have to. You know, while, while Burlington was after these courts, McKenzie and Riley were finding jobs that would work around our tennis schedule. And while meetings were planned behind closed doors, Lydia and Kennedy were planning after our school schedule, because they're in jazz band, municipal band, and they have, they have those things after tennis practice. While nobody offered us a chance to bid on a little of the Dankwart Park, Bethany and Claire were participating 4H and band, all which are held after tennis practice, ensemble acting, art practice. I'm happy to discuss fundraising ideas. You know, 30, 30 years, you know, we, we do need to do our part. We took you for granted, absolutely. Maybe we can do a rental situation like we do with the things, but don't let anybody own a piece of them. I have to believe that you can see that we've been treated unfairly. The compromise from Burlington, the only compromise, if you want to call it that, was you can play after we're done. You can play after we're done. Well, so can the entire city. They're public courts. You can play after we're done. That was that only compromise that we've got. Sorry if I'm getting a little angry. I'm passionate about this. I love my kids. You know, life isn't fair. It's a lesson we all have to learn, but I hope they wouldn't learn it from a non-compromising athletic director. God, I hope they don't learn it from you. This isn't Burlington thing, Notre Dame thing, city thing. Those kids are our future. I'm not asking you to hand it to them. Please, don't take it away from me.
That was powerful, my friend. I'll tell you. You know, wow. If I need something, I'm going to have you speak for me.
Hello, my name is Lydia Becker from 12 Cascade Terrace. I'm the team captain of the Notre Dame West Burlington Girls Tennis Team and have been the number one seed for the past two years. I'd simply like to provide some insight into the effect of practice times on my teammates and myself, because altering our practice time is more than just a minor inconvenience. If pushing back our practice time meant simply dealing with much colder and darker conditions, we could power through, because we're a really tough team, but it's more than that. The vast majority of our varsity team this year consists of seniors, which means that with scholarships and college decisions, we've never been busier. Tennis has always been our escape from that. Being able to go straight from school to the courts to blow off some steam has tremendously helped us relax and take our minds off of our many conflicts. But moving our practice time just makes tennis another one of those conflicts. Between work, school, concerts, a Notre Dame requirement to end practice by six on Wednesday nights for religious purposes, and numerous other engagements, we can't afford to have such a difficult practice time. After all of these compromises, our girls' team was only able to schedule two home meets this year to accommodate Burlington's 14. This means that for our remaining eight games, we have to sacrifice hours upon hours of travel time. Overall, different practice times will put an enormous strain on our team and hinder our success. We've, we're already under a tremendous amount of pressure due to high expectations we hold for this season. Last year, our girls' team reigned as district champions and advanced to the state tournament. For the past two years, my doubles partner Claire and I traveled to the state individual tournament. And when we travel to these state tournaments, we aren't introduced as just Notre Dame. We're introduced as Burlington Notre Dame. We're proud to represent and leave a legacy of success for both our team and our city. And for many of us, this season is our last chance to do so. So, please do not take that away from us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the audience? Robert?
Robert Kreitzer, 810 North Fifth. I'm not much of a tennis player, but it seems like all these girls could probably teach me something about life. I would like to address if there might be other options if this school has discussed this. Real quick question, though. Y'all ever play each other? Does Burlington play Notre Dame? So, okay, so like, maybe a joint practice might be out of the question since you're going to be playing each other, or maybe not. Maybe you could do something about squeezing in those that need an earlier time because of their job or religious practice at an earlier time. I don't know what this school's discussed, but for those of you that need to be done by five, maybe squeeze them in. For those of you, it doesn't matter. Some of these students would probably be more flexible than some of the adults in this situation, just saying, because they have that flexibility. And then I think we've left out the option of the other tennis courts at Perkins Park, if nobody minds me saying so. I think, don't we have at least two more courts? Or how many are at Perkins Park on, is it white, the one way on the backside of it?
There's, there's one adult course, and then there are two courses for minors, for children.
Okay. So, there's at least one court available. But I really think that, that if it's just one year, they could probably figure out something for a more flexible schedule for those that have to be done by a certain time. Some have the extracurriculars that are after tennis, but, or the option of mixing our boys and their girls was what I was originally going to go with. Like, maybe we just practice together for this year. We are Burlington, they just said it, and make this happen for everybody, even if you play against each other, a little friendly competition for a year wouldn't hurt anything, I don't think. That's just my opinion, but just looking for some outside-the-box solutions.
Thank you, Mr. Kreitzer. Anybody else from the audience?
Ben Brink, 414 North Street. Wow. Lot of interesting comments. I would hope the council would vote to pull this from, for consideration tonight so that a better agreement can be worked out by all parties. Thank you.
Anybody else from the audience?
Hello. I'm Zach Shea. I'm the activities director at Burlington High School. So, first of all, I want to address a couple of things. Number one is the timeline. When we met in Mr. Tisland's office... When we met in Mr. Tisland's office, it was stated that Burlington High School would like to use Dankwart Park for practices. So before me and Mr. Swink met in my office to discuss the schedule, that was already stated and discussed. So the timeline is inaccurate. Number two, being allowed and able to use BHS tennis courts. Yes, there's some cracks. There is some safety issues. But what you can use it for is drill time. I've coached football for twenty years. You do not use the entire football field when you're practicing. There is parts of our tennis courts that can be used for drills. And there's other courts that we have at BHS, just like at Dankwart, that can be used as a game situation. I understand that the timing of this is not the best, okay? Our courts are really not playable for games, for tournaments, to ask other teams to come here and play on our BHS courts. So our business manager and our director of maintenance came to the city, and this is how this whole agreement started. We personally believe that if we are going to give fifty thousand dollars, which if you do the breakdown, thirty-nine practices over ten years, that's a hundred and twenty-eight dollars per practice that we'd be giving. But again, to go back to the timeline, as an athletic director, you have to adjust, adapt, and overcome. I get a call from the state that says that we have to host a basketball game in two weeks, a state basketball game. We make it happen. That's what you do as an A.D. I understand that five o'clock is not the prime time to practice. We do it all the time in the winter. We have one gym. We have practices all the way until nine o'clock at night, okay? So sacrifices have to be made if you're going to play or do extracurricular activities. It's not always the prime time. You're not always going to be able to practice right after school. Our kids face the same challenges that they do at West Burlington Notre Dame. Is this an ideal agreement? I don't know. But I do know that we are given a significant amount of money, so we are requesting that we have priority scheduling. Now, if you are a coach, you understand that as the season progresses, your practice times start to shorten. So let's say we don't practice at one day. Jeremy, we're not going to be there today. You know, get your girls on or your boys right after school. I think that's a working relationship that we can continue to have. I also offered West Burlington Notre Dame this option, to co-op with Burlington. They co-op with us in swimming. They do not have a swimming pool. They don't have tennis courts. I offered them that opportunity, and it was turned down. So I think that I have went out of my way to try and give them options and opportunities at BHS and then with our tennis court or with our tennis teams. I guess in closing, at the end of the day, you're talking about two months for West Burlington Notre Dame and Burlington High School to play on those courts. The other eight months, I guess it'd be six months, seven months, those courts will be repaired for the citizens of the city of Burlington to play on adequate and safe courts. So I think that's the biggest picture. And I guess, Greg, we haven't met, but I could say that if this agreement is voted down today, I don't know if, you know, we would have the option of putting the fifty thousand dollars in another agreement. I don't know if that'll be there, because at the end of the day, we could still, both teams are going to end up playing at Dankwart. Anything else? Thank you.
Greg Reynolds, the director of finance for the Burlington School District. Just from a business perspective, is how this initially all came up. I mean, you've seen the pictures of your tennis courts, the cracks, the need of repairs. My understanding is without the school's funding, those repairs wouldn't happen. Burlington Schools tennis courts are in similar disrepair. And so we just looked at it as a great opportunity. The city of Burlington, Burlington Schools are both tax communities. We both have more needs than we have funds. So we looked at it just as a perfect opportunity for both entities to work together. Here's something we can do for the community and for the school district, get some good tennis courts that would be available for public use. Similar to any type of rental agreement, when the city rents property, the district rents property, you come to some type of agreement, asking for a schedule, here's the dates, excuse me, dates and times that you want to use the facility. So we just looked at it as a good opportunity for both entities to work together and find a solution that helps the city and the school, though. Thank you.
Counsel?
Well, I've got a pile of questions, but I'll wait for you. Go ahead. Yeah, well, I mean, first, let me just say, I don't, I'm a BHS alum, and I don't think there's any evil empire. That's what kind of came across, so my apologies a little bit on that. It just sounds like two parties that haven't been able to work out a fair and equitable, what they both consider to be fair and equitable, as far as practice goes. My understanding is if we vote on this tonight, this does not have a rotating practice schedule, which was maybe discussed. I don't know if that's been kicked around. So for me, as it stands tonight, I'm going to have to say no for the agreement. I definitely want to get the courts done. That's not where it's at. It's to matter. Seems to me like there's a little more work needs to be done on this agreement. Or in this agreement, I mean.
Mr. Recker?
Jeremy, can you tell me, does the indoor facility that's either being proposed at the Recplex or the one at Southeastern Community College include a tennis court or facility? Does anybody know that?
No, it doesn't.
Okay.
The two different, one's more a soccer-style facility that you could do other activities on, but it is designed towards soccer. The other is basketball courts.
And tennis hasn't been discussed in one of those?
It hasn't been designed, as I see.
Eric, how many events take place on those courts that are arranged events outside of high school or school-related events?
We have a handful of public events, not meets or tournament per se, but just groups, tennis groups that get together and play. We don't have an exact number. There's not a requirement that they come before us. If they're just, if six people are going out and playing round robin or something, they're just playing on the court, so.
Okay. And what will it cost? What's the expected cost to redo both the five on the larger court and then the two that are in the Crepo portion?
Right now, it's just around seventy-eight thousand.
And how much of that's going to be USA Tennis Grant match?
Undetermined if we get any. We anticipate possibly up to ten thousand.
So it's up to ten? That's the maximum that we can end up with? Okay. So if they provide fifty thousand dollars, there's still going to have to be some type of financial commitment from somewhere else of about eighteen thousand dollars, right? So where's, at this point, where's that coming?
Some starker funds that we pulled from other projects to go to this.
And the fee structure that you discussed, and you may not have all the details, assuming we didn't take the fifty thousand dollars, would the money that's collected through the fee structure go specifically to improve or repair the courts? Or is it just going like into a general fund and then it gets pulled from for whatever project comes up?
That would be up to counsel, how we budget it.
You can set it aside into a side fund. And the cost, if you, as you talk about costs, though, if you don't do it now, if you wait for funds to build, you're going to hit it.
And then increase costs and.
Yeah, and I think you're at lifecycle costs on those, a couple of those courts that you're looking at, a couple, two to five years, maybe?
For Crepo courts, yeah.
And the cost of, when you hit that lifecycle, you change significantly. Now, over, I know you guys talked about that last week with the rep. What did you look at if you wait a couple of years, maybe for a longer term?
And this is a five, eight, ten-year system or improvement that we're doing right now. We're hoping for ten years. Generally, they're at eight to ten-year timeframe that we'll be back again. Our goal would be a twenty-five-year time improvement, which is a much more conference improvement for, right now for Crepo Park, if we did that this year, would be sixty-seven thousand. For Dankwart Park would be a hundred and sixty-five thousand. That's this year. In ten years, we'd expect that to grow considerably. They're going to be in worse shape, so. And then every year that we don't do it, if we do not do these courts this fall, I guess, looking through some of the agreements, I think it was in Knoxville, they were in decent shape one year, they came back the next spring, and they needed complete rework. So that's just our fear. We don't know what the cost will be in future years if it's not done, I guess this year. It could be around that seventy-eight thousand again next year, or it could be closer to a hundred thousand next year, depending how, what the winter is and what the cracks do and how that expands, so. But to do that long-term, twenty-five-year kind of improvement to the courts, it's around two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars right now for those seven courts. In five years, it might be two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Ten years, maybe two-seventy-five.
So Eric, what was our plan if BHS didn't come and offer the cash?
We had Crepo Park on the five-year CIP the last two years. That was taken off, going to be taken off this year. They were just going to unfortunately fall. We cut four-hundred thousand through CIP projects and development parks this year, and so we'd just be where we're at with them, that they would not be improved at this time.
Okay.
Zach, I got a quick question for you. What, let's assume that for a second, the Dankwart and Crepo Park didn't exist, was BHS not going to make any investment into their courts at any point in time? Or was this ideally the cheaper option? Or what's the driving force there?
It's definitely the cheaper option.
Can I have you come to the voting, please?
It's definitely the cheaper option. We're looking into a long-range plan of five to ten years in building a second gym where our tennis courts currently exist. So to put money into them right now and then, you know, build that gym and tear them right back up, it doesn't make sense.
Sure. Oh, yeah, I would agree. Okay, thanks, Zach.
Well, I think Reynolds kind of hit the nail on the head when he said both the city and the schools have more needs than funds. We both have more needs than funds. And I know there's a lot of fear and anger and disagreement over this issue, and I really applaud everyone that came out tonight, because I think we can disagree without being disagreeable. So I really want to applaud everybody for that. In our Burlington comprehensive plan, I do want to review that if we did go together with this agreement, it will, one, promote our shared use of public facilities, which is one of our goals. The city will coordinate recreational planning with other public and private entities to maximize our resources. It seems like it would achieve that. Burlington will reduce costs and improve quality of municipal services through partnerships, and we will be able to communicate whenever service contracts and other capital improvements are up for consideration. So it seems like it does hit that. And I do understand the passion of wanting to get to a part-time job and wanting to get to your 4H and all your other entities. I have a lot of boys involved in sports. Sometimes their practice would be at seven-thirty at night. You know what a hardship that is on a family? But there are some positive things. We would learn to work around it, and we would adjust the mealtimes. And luckily, the employers were good, and they would work with my children's schedules. So sometimes something that seems like the worst possible scenario, there can be a bright side to it if you're willing to work around it and be flexible. And like I said, it's about a two, three-month commitment. Wow, if this does go through, you girls and guys would really be honing your flexibility skills and coaches and everybody involved. So again, I appreciate you coming tonight. It's okay to disagree, and nobody got disagreeable, and I was really happy with that. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I was just going to ask Jeremy real quick. Have you had any discussion with regard to fundraising, what that would look like and what kind of timeline that would look like?
So at this point, I mean, this late in the game, we have not had any conversations in regard to fundraising. We've just been trying to keep our head above water and keep our tennis program. So we haven't had any conversations in regard to fundraising right now, but we would be open to that.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, and I don't want to try to encourage some sort of strange, like bidding war where, you know, one person tries to, you know, fundraise more money. I understand the need for there to be more, I think possibly more communication. And I know maybe that's not fair, because Burlington is willing to give this money now, but I think, I don't know, it's a tough situation. But I do think some sort of rotation, definitely more communication needs to be done on this. And I've, you know, maybe it was the city, you know, the city's issue here, communicating. I'm not sure. But I think at least all three parties probably could use a little bit more.
To be fair, this is kind of a little odd, but raise your hand if you're here for the tennis courts issue tonight. Okay. So one of the things that this has really highlighted for me is how important these courts are, not just to the individual schools, but to everybody in the community involved. I spoke with both athletic directors. I've gone to all the courts in the community, including the ones at BHS. I've also taken the opportunity to call several people that are associated with the tennis publicly in this community but aren't associated with the school, just to get as many opinions as I could. And where I'm at at this point is, is I don't want to take them and I don't want to give them to anybody. But I think that we've basically ignited the discussion for fundraising in order to improve the courts in the community as a whole, whether they are at Crepo or Dankwart or Perkins or BHS. And it really highlights the demand for tennis in our community, which is surprising to me, because, well, I didn't play tennis, but I never really saw those courts as a giant jewel in the community, because most of the time when I go by, they're not in use. But that's not correct. There's enough people here to show me that that's not correct. So what I would suggest is, at this point in time, I'd love to see us postpone, or not table it, what is it, postpone it, if that's even an option. But I'd like to see us revisit this towards the end of the year or the fall. And in the meantime, I'd love to see both schools come together and try to come up with some type of fundraising goal that may exceed the fifty thousand dollar mark. I'll tell you, there are a lot of people in this community that not only support the two schools involved, but also will support any of these quality-of-life improvements in the community. I'll write you the first check, but at the end of the day, I think that this makes the most sense, is let's see what the schools can do together in order to improve them and go from there.
I would echo a lot of what Matt just said. And one other thing, because I said I was a proud BHS alum, and just, Tanner, yes, my wife does work at Notre Dame, but that doesn't enter into it. She said she'd still talk to me either way, so. She's worked for Notre Dame, she hasn't worked for Notre Dame. I've had kids at Notre Dame and kids at BHS. They're both fine school systems, so it really doesn't come down to that for me. It comes down to what is our best foot going forward. And as far as the agreement stands today, there's some issues with it. But what Matt said, you know, maybe there's some room for us to help and be a catalyst to help come up with a better agreement and a better way to go about it. Because I'm with you. I've gone by those courts a million times in my lifetime, and I've always thought, man, what a, you know, they're empty. What a waste. Waste that people weren't using them, and boy, does anybody play tennis anymore. Well, obviously, we found out we were wrong on that, so that's all I have.
Okay. Everybody's got out what they need to say? All right. I'd just like to, again, tell everybody thank you for coming down, letting your thoughts be heard. Again, these are always complicated situations, and that's why you don't see fifty thousand people running up to sit in this chair, but that means.
I appreciate your discussion and your comments. I just don't know, what am I supposed to do on Monday? We have practice. Where am I supposed to go? Are we supposed to, are we supposed to see who gets to the tennis courts first?
I would say we can work that out.
Sam, that's not, again, that's not the, that's not the city's.
All right, but I'm just saying that that problem has not been resolved, so that's completely up to us.
And that's not, that's not what's up for. And, and that's not, that's not what's up for vote tonight, so.
No, but that's not, that's not what we would do from the, from the council.
From a staff perspective, we don't have any direction that we can take to say how we can schedule anything. We don't have a formal agreement in place. We understand it's been used that way, but as this issue has come up, that's just made us real, realize down, community development has looked at it and realized we don't have an agreement. You point that out, we don't have anything to stand on to reserve them for one group versus another. The council has the right to make a decision, but you can't do that. At this point, if you're, other than the agreement that you have in front of you.
Of us, yeah.
Otherwise, it'd be an action to take at a future meeting.
Okay. So are we, everybody's ready to move forward then?
Your honor, I have a motion to close.
Second.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Do a resolution, please.
Your honor, I have a resolution approving an agreement with the Burlington Community School District relative to the use of Dankwart and Crepo Park tennis courts.
Second.
Second.
Kathleen, let's take it to move.
Phillips?
No.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
No.
Wilson?
No.
Okay. Number three is a consideration of an ordinance rezoning the property locally known as 333 Curran Street from R2 Single Family Residential to C1 Limited Commercial Zoning District.
Second.
Mr. Tisland?
So rezoning request from the property owner at 333 Curran to rezone from R2 to C1 Limited Commercial.
Yeah, we'll let her clear up real quick. My left ear isn't working that good tonight.
You got sinus stuff too, I'm saying? You got sinus?
Sinus? I don't know what it is. Okay. That's it. Let me shut those, go ahead, Mr. Tisland. Go ahead.
And this was requests, request of the property owner of 333 Curran to rezone from R2 Single Family Transitional to C1 Limited Commercial. This went to the Planning Commission on January 16th regarding the rezoning. And they voted four to one to recommend approval of the requested rezoning to council. The recommendation of approval was based on the desire of the use, desired use of the property for limited commercial, location adjacent to existing arterial and collector streets and nearby surrounding neighborhood mixed uses. There are a variety of neighborhood commercial, limited commercial uses on Agency Street, this being kind of the central location of Agency and Curran intersection. They did recommend a change of the future line use map from low-density residential to neighborhood mixed use. I guess examples, property just to the west is Harris Lawn. There is a gas station further down the road. And Curran is a collector and Agency's arterial street. As I mentioned before, just to clarify, the one no vote was just based on not a definitive plan for what will go in there. And then just concern about how that would develop. The property would have to follow all our zoning code requirements for access setbacks, use under that C1 designation. But again, four voted for an approval of the requested rezoning to council with the one having that concern. With that, the applicant is here as well. If you have any further questions, I can try and answer as well.
Are there any questions from the audience? Questions or concerns? I see none. Counsel?
Yeah, I'm going to miss it. You said their, their plan is now to, to take those buildings.
Yeah, and John can talk to the timing on that. The, the plan is to demo that property there.
John Gasky, 4186 Summer Street, Burlington, Iowa. Yeah, I have multiple properties in town. This one here is just gone beyond.
Yeah.
And yeah, the properties be demoed, it be cleaned up. And, you know, my, my plan was to sell the property as commercial space.
And answers my question, thank you.
Yep.
I guess one note on that, it was being sold on contract, so it was the contract buyer that had the condition of the property, not the current owner, so.
Sure.
Anything else from the audience? Oh yeah, we already did that. Counsel, you guys are good.
Yeah, I think given the, the mix already on that, I'm pretty comfortable with it going to, you know, commercial from residential. I don't know anyone else.
Everybody else is good?
Good.
All right. Let's get a motion. LGM?
Was that me? Sorry.
I can't get used to seeing that.
I can't get used to all these initials. Your honor, I have a motion to close.
Second.
Reverend Second, Kathleen?
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Have a motion for the preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance rezoning the property locally known as 333 Curran Street from R2 Single Family Residential to C1 Limited Commercial Zoning District.
Second.
Looking second. Let's vote it on. Vote it on, let's vote on it.
Vote it.
Let's vote it on. All right.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, well done. Number four is a consideration of an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Burlington, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to the standard penalty applicable to the certain sections of the code and violations thereof. Chief?
Yeah, just like at the work session, our city attorney kind of advised you what was going on. And the, the penalty is being reverted back to what it's been since, I'm, I'm sure when the code was originally codified and what year that would be, I don't know. But that standard penalty for a simple misdemeanor in the state of Iowa is just what it says. It's $500 fine or imprisonment not to exceed 30 days. And the big thing with simple misdemeanors, that's or, it can't be both. And with, with any other fine or jail time, it could possibly be both. So what, the, the addition to the ordinance would be, however, any award of imprisonment under this section shall be imposed only upon the express request of the city's representative that's prosecuting the case. So that's the added sentence. There's, there's not any confusion as to what's changing. The reason this changed, that we implemented the change was for the defense bill, the indigent defense bill. And that was the only reason. So it's going to go back to what it was with that sentence.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions or concern?
Yes.
Kelly Hall, 816 Valley. Just wanted to say, really, really great meeting today. I, I don't love tennis as much as them, but my father did quite a bit. And you guys have done an amazing job. I, I really enjoyed all of your comments and concerns that you made to the people that love tennis. I'm here for this particular ordinance, okay? And I think it's really confusing. And I, I got a couple of, of answers on this ordinance. One was from the city manager who's here this evening, Jim. And I also contacted an attorney who is an attorney who does seven counties and cities in the state of Iowa. And he actually wrote the laws on this. And the reason why it concerned me is because I looked up all the code. And, you know, they, they like their serve, I like the law. And I looked at section 1.14 of the Code of Ordinances. And I spoke with Chief Beard about this and he said.
Which section was that?
It's 1.14 of the code. And it's being changed to 364.22, okay? And I actually have the codes for you. But before I submit this, I just wanted to know, you know, I know that the council's new, but I, I asked, you know, why are we changing this? Because reading the code, I mean, it could be a nuisance abatement on a property, which I personally was involved in with the city of Burlington. And some of it was erroneous. So, you know, if the city says that I didn't mow my lawn, which they did, they charged me over $400 every time, without really notifying me, I could then go to jail for not mowing my lawn, okay? And, you know, I don't know how much everybody on the council knows about this particular ordinance. I don't know if, if Mr. Mayor McCambo wants to ask, you know, I'm, you're going to vote on this, so I assume that there is some knowledge on this particular ordinance. If anybody could, could tell me what they know about it, I would appreciate.
There appears to be some confusion because some heads were shaking in the, the audience.
Yeah, I have the code right here and I'm happy to share that. Are, you're going to vote on it, so with all due respect.
I don't understand what your question is though.
It's, it's basically asking, what, do you guys, what is your interpretation of the law that you're going to vote on this evening? City ordinance and law that you're about to change. I'm asking what your interpretation is as city council, okay? Because Chief Beard is saying that sometime in, in a few weeks ago, it was, I think formally, section 364.22, is that correct, Chief?
That's the state of Iowa code section.
Yes, yes.
That's a reference to that section. This is, this is the ordinance.
It's being changed back.
This is our code section 1.14. It was before, it still is. But it's been modified. Basically, language within the state code. That's state code.
Okay, so I understand, because I spoke with you earlier today, your interpretation, but I'm asking the council, who's about.
I'll give you mine, I'll give you mine.
Please.
We've got a nuisance problem.
Yes.
That's what it is and.
Is it nuisance abatement?
We have a nuisance problem. We have a nuisance issue. That's what I'm saying.
What type of nuisance?
Any nuisance that has to do with the code?
We have, we have, we have a plethora of nuisance issues.
Okay.
And because we do, that's one of our big issues, we're trying to clean up the city. That's, that's where all this comes from. Anything that has to do with nuisances, that's where all this came from. It stems from that you drive through the city, you see yards out of shape, and you see houses ready to fall down. That's, that's what this is.
Perfect. That's what I understood it was too. Okay, so it's nuisance on property. We agree?
This is, this is for any violation of our code.
He's speaking, the mayor's speaking about nuisance on property. Could be cars or any type of, of blight or deemed blight.
Are you asking a question? I'm waiting to be to get.
No, that's what, that's what you're saying. So that's how I understood it too, okay? And, and I have the law. And it basically says that under section 364.22, which is going to be the new city ordinance, okay? If you don't clean up the nuisance in a matter that the city sees fit, you can do 30 days in jail. I think that's a big deal, okay? So this is, this is how I deem this law. I deem this as basically intent to censor, intimidate, silence, make it very difficult for people to protect themselves within the law. So I had, I had a very similar problem with the city of Burlington, okay? Where I wasn't notified when they were charging me over $400 and putting it on my tax bill, okay? When I tried to remedy that situation, I was belittled by a city contractor who claimed that he boarded up my building and I was charged over $1,000. And no one's ever given me an answer as to what exactly they boarded up. So if I didn't remedy that situation in the way that the city sees fit, I could then have 30 days in jail be placed upon me and have a misdemeanor, okay? That's scary, okay? That's very scary to me. So let's say a neighbor is complaining about trash in the yard, okay? I have a property outside of the city limits, but if it were in the city and I was complaining and they didn't want to move their cars, it could be up to the city, which I consider to be abuse of power in, in this particular.
Which would be most likely the county attorney's office.
Yes, yes, well.
So there are, there are.
I want to, can we taper this when we get down to it?
Sure. Taper it?
Yeah, can, can we get down to the crux of what you're?
Yes, yes. I don't think that the, the council fully understands what they're agreeing to in this. And also, I've had two different answers as to why this is being changed. Someone said that we're changing it, I think it was Jim, because Amy Beavers, the city attorney, has advised that we, that the city can't prosecute. And then Chief Beard said something about the same, along, along the lines of the same thing. And I've been to all the council meetings prior to June. I was just wondering when this law was changed? Because I've been told by Jim and Chief Beard that the law's been changed and you're changing it back.
Okay, well, I, I don't think we're going to be able to answer all your questions tonight. I think you'll probably have to get most of your questions answered. And you can, we've got the departments, you can go to them.
Yeah, I, I've spent a lot of time with the departments and I've been insulted by a few of them. However, if, if this is being changed and you're just changing it back, when, when was that council meeting? When? Jim says it's in June, Chief Beard said it was a few weeks ago. So I just want to know the real answer.
I'm not sure when it was, I can't remember back, but I have been at every meeting because I'm the mayor.
Yes. Well, I've missed a couple, you've missed a couple too when I was here. But it's good to see you and you're always bright and cheery.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. However, you know, this seems pretty serious to me and I don't.
That actually brings up a great point because in our, and it says, however, any award of imprisonment under this section shall be imposed only upon the express request of the city's prosecural representative. And I think that's important to realize that that's only if it's deemed extremely necessary. I think that's kind of put in there for that reason.
It's also important to recognize too that, because we're going to, we're not going to do this all night, but it is also important to recognize too that here, here's what we've got a problem with. People buy property in, in the city of Burlington, since that's what we're, that's, since that's what you're addressing. People buy property in the city of Burlington, big properties. You brought up yours, so I'll just go ahead and address it. It's a big building.
Yeah.
People break out windows, well, somebody's got to do something about that. You've got grass all around that building, it doesn't cut itself.
It's, it's just one strip of grass.
And they leave them and they don't manage them, somebody has to. They have to, well then, that costs us. We've got men, manpower that we need to send off to do something, but instead, we have to have them come back and to take care of putting up boards repeatedly, repeatedly on buildings. So the thing is that we're wanting, we're, we're looking for, they're looking for, you're looking for us to be responsible. The thing is that if you're going to do business in the city of Burlington, the people that are doing business in the city of Burlington have to be responsible too.
Absolutely. It might have been more beneficial if your economic development, your greater Burlington partnership, your downtown partners wouldn't have given me misinformation and steered me in the wrong direction. It might have been helpful if my parcel numbers had not been changed by the county of Des Moines without me being notified. Might have been helpful if all those things would have been more on the forefront, okay? So, and, and you know, all this can be proved. So the bottom line is, is this, okay? I, I've seen a lot in the city and seeing this is scary, okay? It's very scary. Because when I try and address situations such as being on the agenda as of December 19th, when I contacted Charlie and Eric, and they said, yes, Kelly, no problem, we'll put you on the agenda for the 29th. Send us your documents on the 25th. I sent them all of my documents and they said, oh, sorry, you're not on the agenda, okay? I don't play games. I've been called a liar by Charlie Nichols this week. I don't need to lie, okay? Here it is. I just.
Go ahead, Mayor, we're going to, we're going to go ahead and, yeah. As a mayor, I'm going to go ahead and shut this down. We're going to thank you for your time, for coming and.
No problem.
If you have any other questions that you have not getting answered tonight, you can come down to City Hall during the daytime.
I've asked to meet with you personally.
Nobody's ever sent me a message that you asked to meet with me.
I, I contacted you personally and sent you an email, which I have.
Okay, thank you.
So I still have it.
Thank you.
I have all my emails.
Thank you.
Just one quick clarification before we move on. Due process is entirely up to the court. You don't impose due process in these criminal cases. We don't impose that. You don't impose the fine. We don't impose the fine. You don't impose imprisonment. We don't impose imprisonment. That's up to a whole nother section of our government. And that's the court. And that's what we're speaking of. And these simple misdemeanors are absolutely prosecutable if the judge chooses either or. And when she references the state code, that's exactly what that means. Our penalty mirrors the state code as it has forever. So whether you have a city ordinance or whether you don't, that same citation, that same offense can be written under a criminal code. If you look at our codes, every one of our criminal codes as a city ordinance is mirrored by a state code with this exact penalty. It has been and it always will be. This was strictly 100% about the indigent defense bill. That's what it was about. And that's why the changes were made. So due process, let's not be confused. The judges of this state and of this county and of this country decide these due process things. We don't.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Eric, when you're dealing with municipal infractions, how do you, what are the penalties that go with those?
We have, I guess typically, it's just the abatement.
We have, I guess typically, it's just the abatement with the associated administrative fees. There is the option of municipal infraction. Looked into our code, there is also the option of this penalty under section 1.14, so there's those three different, I guess, problems of municipal infraction. We've never done this type of penalty since, in the last 15 years since I've been here. We, typically, it's the administrative fee, we do the nuisance abatement, we charge the fee, send it to the property owner, and then it goes on the taxes. We've done a couple municipal infractions where it's gone to the judge. If you remember, the individual had the patent and degree on the corner of Washington and Seventh, that went through the court system, his order was to have it cleaned up, and that was, the penalty was having it cleaned up, and any future penalty would be that we could remedy that immediately. So we haven't gone, ever had gone through a jail process or that type of fine process.
The other part, when it comes to this, you don't, you haven't written it under those. This isn't about dealing with nuisances primarily. This has to do with.
She asked me a couple personal questions.
This question, or this section is being, is dealing specifically more with, for our police department, they write citations under our code, they were losing the ability to have them be processed by the county attorney without this language in there. So specifically to go back to exactly what the language was prior to last fall, whenever this ordinance was officially, finally adopted.
Regardless of whether or not we do this, it's still applicable, though.
Uh, we, they, the count, the, the police department now has the option to write these under, under state statutes as opposed to under ours.
That's my point, is regardless of whether or not we do anything here locally, it's still something that when they issue the subpoena or the citation, that they're just gonna say, yeah, right, okay. Your honor, I have a motion to clo, or, are you done?
Yeah.
I have a motion to close.
Second.
Kathleen.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCambo.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Your honor, I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the city of Burlington, Iowa, by amending provisions pertaining to the standard penalty applicable to certain sections of the code and violations thereof.
Second.
Moved in second, Kathleen, let's take the vote.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCambo.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Okay, next is consideration of 2018 amendment for urban renewal plan for Burlington Consolidated Urban Renewal Area related to use of incremental property tax revenues, public improvements. Mr. Tissler.
Thank you.
Anytime we do a, a project that uses TIF funds to do, to pay for it, we have to add it to our urban renewal plan, have it listed. And one of the steps that gets, has to be done along the way, besides providing, having a public hearing and providing for public comment, is to have a spot, a chance for the other taxing entities, the county and the school district, to provide them an opportunity to have comment on the proposed amendment to the plan and use of funds. So we did hold that meeting, the school district was in attendance at it to talk about the, the proposed amendment. The amendment under consideration is to add Central Street Bridge repairs to the 350,000. We're looking at the signalization project out along Roosevelt, I think overall cost on that project was, the majority of which is, we're looking to have funded with grant fundings through the DOT. And then Broadway extension, familiar, if you're familiar with the area, the, the reclex, the dead end there on that entry, to have that loop around back to Mount, West Burlington Ave. That would be most likely, the, the, the goal there is to get, do that as a rise project to, so that that would be DOT funding as well as a match on that. Those are the three projects that we have. The Central Street is in this fiscal year 2019 budget, and the other two are listed as projects for fiscal year 20. It's just up here for you to have consideration now, where do you want to add them and, and do those projects.
Questions or concerns from the audience? Leon? I'm sorry, Mr. Shane.
Leon is fine. Leon Chahan, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street. I, I guess this goes to one of my big complaints about what I refer to as tax excrement financing. I wasn't gonna miss that. You're using the school's money to do city projects. The school district's hurting financially anyway, so by using this money for your projects, they're gonna have to increase their levy to make up the difference. And that's why I object so much to what you call TIF and what I call the other. You're using, 40% of the funding for these projects is coming from the school's coffers. They're hurting. You really need to think about that. It's not free money. And it winds up being on my property bill, property tax bill, and my neighbors.
Okay, anyone else? Council?
No.
I don't have any questions.
I have a motion to close.
Second.
Go ahead.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCambo.
Rinker. Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Potem, I have a resolution approving the 2018 amendment to the urban renewal plan for Burlington Consolidated Urban Renewal Area.
Moved in second. Put it to vote? Yes, go ahead.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCambo. Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
All right, next we have a consideration of plans and specifications for the 2018 Agency Street Widening Project East End.
Good evening. Eric, if you wouldn't mind throwing up the concept picture of the Agency project. Just a little background, this project is a widening project, a reconstruction from the current status of asphalt and concrete to a concrete road. It'll be adding a center turn lane in there. I, last week I talked about an estimate, that estimate is 2.1, I think I covered this book last week. And just, I, we, you already approved it, but the easements, I didn't have enough time to talk with my staff. The $6,000 in easement costs was actually not true. There was $4,000 in estimated value of easements and right-of-way that the property owners waived, so the $2,050 in cost, which was what you saw in your memo. And I have Jason McKenzie from Veinstring Kim, the design engineer, on the project, if you have any questions about something, I'll let him talk about the traffic control as well.
Thanks, Nick.
Thank you. As far as how the project is gonna be staged, will be, so first, I, I went out and I talked to all the property owners and told them about the project, and then also I, I was also obtained all the easements. So I, I got to know the property owners one-on-one, so I came up with a good traffic control and phasing plan that could accommodate all the property owners. You know, that's, that's the biggest key, to make sure that the business owners can get in and out safely and be able to operate and be able to do it safely. So we thought it was critical, critical to maintain the corridor, maintain traffic all the way through the corridor, from US 61 Roosevelt all the way through Mount Pleasant. So then, there wouldn't be, so there's not gonna be any detours throughout the whole project. So how we're gonna phase it is, the first stage, we're gonna go in, and we're gonna remove all the medians that are there now, and we're gonna put in temporary asphalt payment. That'll be the first stage all the way through. And then, once that's done, we're gonna go to stage two, and we'll do, we'll do construction on the outside lanes, and the entrances, and the sidewalk. And then we'll have one lane each way on the inside lanes, so to accommodate traffic all the way up and through. At that point, Columbus signal will still be in operational at that time, because part of the project is to replace that signal. And then, after, after that stage and everything is complete, we will flip traffic to the outside all the way through the corridor, so the traffic will run on the outside lanes, and construction will be in the inside lanes. One thing to point out, too, is we have sub-stages throughout here, throughout the project, too. And the, what the sub-stages are, is I'm alternating driveways, one's being constructed, one's closed. So for like, instance, like Legacy will be closed, and then Walgreens entrance will be open. And then Columbus will be open, and then Hy-Vee's, Hy-Vee and all these entrance will be open. So we're alternating it. What's good about this project is they have a lot of, they can keep each other's property internally, so that, that, that makes the project a lot easier, as far as, if we didn't have that, then we'd have to put in temporary drives, and then rip out the temporary drives, and then, so we're really fortunate that they got inner, internal circulation between their properties. So that really is the advantage of the project. So we made it a point, talked with all the business owners, you know, what, what their needs were, and we, I think we, with this plan of traffic control and phasing plan for this project, we accommodated that. And so, you know, I've talked to all the business owners, and I think we got a good plan, and we just, now it's for the contractor to implement it, as far as making sure they have the right signage and stuff. So we went through, and we detailed out all the traffic control plans, so the contractor knows exactly what they need to do, so. Does this point out any questions on the project, or the, or phasing or traffic control?
Do you have any questions from anybody from the audience on this project?
I just want to.
Can I be, can I be?
The Tennessee legislature, I'm applauding you to do this, because.
Can I be, can I be, come to the microphones?
That I applaud you doing that, because it does need to be done. So this is gonna go all the way to that village, that Newport Village, and that's where it's gonna stop, right? Where it's gonna, you're not gonna go all the way to the stoplight?
No. Just, just about 100 feet past Marrow's Court.
Well, it needs to be done, there, there's one reparty I would like to see.
Counsel?
I talked to a couple of, a couple of business managers that along that, along that area, and they were pleased with the communication and plans as far as how we're gonna attack that, so I'm, I'm really, really excited about this project getting done.
Good? Nick?
I was just gonna clarify, in the conceptual drawing that I had up there, it's called the whole one, this wasn't drawn or designed that way, so there will be allowing for left-hand turns at the Legacy and the driveway access there, so. In the concept, it didn't have it, it had the median all the way through, so I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, there, it will be a open, open intersection, be able to turn left or right through there.
Will you, will you be able to make a left-hand turn out of the Hy-Vee gas station going east, where the two roads are beginning to merge together? Will you be able to do that? Okay.
Yes. One, one thing, as you get past Columbus, it turns into a bi-directional left-turn lane, so there actually isn't a median as you go past Columbus. There's a median up to Columbus, but after Columbus, it turns into just a flat.
Right.
Left-turn lane with no median.
You guys good? Motion to close.
Second.
Moved in second, Kathleen.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCambo.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Your honor, I have a resolution approving plans and specifications for 2018 Agency Street Widening Project on the East End.
Second.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCambo.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Well done. Number seven, consideration of fiscal year 2018, 2019 budget.
We're just gonna get the PowerPoint to come up, and we'll get started. Everybody, I gave a copy to everybody at the council table, too. This is just to go over the proposed FY19 budget that you'll vote on tonight. Most of this information you've seen before, but if you do have any questions, it's just in a different format. So we'll get started. Basically, this is just showing our budgeted revenue compared to last year by fund. You'll see the general fund, 12.7 million, it's a little bit down from last year. Overall, our revenues are up about 2 million, mostly that's in the charges for services on the business side. Oh, it's going our way. Then here's another way, just that the revenues are broke down, too, by the source. You'll see property taxes make up 18% of our revenue. Intergovernmental, that is 15%. Those are the grants that are coming from state, or federal, or local entities. 25% of that 17 million, 7.2 million is coming from our sewer charges. The water department is actually in our budget, too, that's 5.4. Solid waste is 1.8, and ambulance is 1.3. And then the other big one is other financing resources, 25% of our revenues, and those basically are bonds for the next fiscal year. Capital projects make, makes up about 12 million of that, and the sewer revenue bonds will borrow for 5.3 million. And then here are expenditures for FY19. You'll see the 66 million, that is down from last year. Basically, the capital projects is where you're seeing that drop. We had some larger capital projects last year. But this is broken down by program or what we call function. You know, public safety, that's gonna be fire, police, and then you just down the laundry list, the other expenditures where they fall. And then this pie chart just breaks it down by type, so of all of our expenses, 30%, our personnel, which is wages and benefits. Debt service makes up 12%, that's where we pay our principal and interest payments. Capital outlay, those are the projects we have budgeted. Commodities, that's supplies we use throughout the city. Contractual services, that's 20% too. Basically, the water, the waters expenditures go into that category, which is 5 million. And then, you'll, Maslow is another one that falls under there for 5.3, is falling under contractual services. This is just showing the property tax rate, we're showing the increase for this year, and then I just show a history of when there's been no change, and also if there's been an increase, how much it was by fiscal year. And the next page just breaks down the different types of the property tax levies that we ask for. You can see the general fund, that's where we get most of it, 5.7 million. That levy rate is set by the state, you cannot go over that 810. What we did want to show on this was that, under the category, other employee benefits, you'll see that star. We actually have the legal ability to levy for all our employee benefits, which they total for the citywide, 3.7 million. We say is, instead of levying for the total amount that we could, we make up the difference with the local option sales tax that we collect. So I know we've, we use that term, that the lost revenue is lowering our property tax rate. It lowers it because we don't levy higher, which we legally do if we wanted to. That makes sense? So you can see at the bottom, I put, you know. So you can see at the bottom, I put, you know, how much we say that we could levy another $3.59 per thousand. Um, but instead we do a, we transfer lost money to cover those benefits, 2.3 million. And then the rest is just made up with our other regular, um, general spending. So here's just a sheet that I show where, um, our, what your assessed, um, what your residential, um, tax rate will be on a hundred dollars assessed value. We did have a decrease in the rollback this year. So, um, your residential property tax rate will actually be lower this year than last year, even though there's been no change in the tax levy. And that shows you, so it's an annual de- decrease on a hundred thousand dollar house of $21.53. On the commercial side, the rollback is the same, 90%. So, um, on a commercial building, they'll be paying the same taxes last year as they did this year. And this slide shows you where your debt money goes. So on a residential house, $909, um, $169 goes to the fire department. Police is 276. Go around and see debt service is 211. And this is where, um, we take into account, um, revenues that are coming in. This is the net expense to these departments. So that's why fire is less than police, even though our budget's pretty much, we've got the ambulance revenue coming in that, um, that gets netted to that. And here's where we're showing where we compare to other communities that have the population of over 20,000. Um, you've seen this before. Um, basically this is showing that, um, the third lowest in, um, property tax valuation per capita. And you can see the, the three lowest have basically the higher tax rates. We need to levy at a higher rate to, to bring in the revenue because our value is lower. Do you want to comment? Do you want to any of that? Okay.
For, to provide the same level of service, you have a lower per capita valuation, it's increasingly difficult. And you, and that's where you, you see the communities with a higher per capita valuation generally are able to keep their tax rates at a lower level than what the communities with the lower per capita valuation. It's a challenge. It's just part of the process that you have to acknowledge and recognize it's part of the operating environment. It's, you still have the flec, same flexibility as everyone else to set the rate wherever you're going to, but providing the same level of service is comparatively harder in our community than the majority of our comparable cities.
So just to go over some of the factors that are impacting our budget valuation. Um, this year we did see an increase, which was good. Um, the total taxable valuation went up almost 4%. We see the most growth in our TIF area that went up 13%. Um, so you can see on the right-hand side there, our property taxes, um, have increased this year budgeted wise, 408,000. But the things in our budget that affects our health insurance premiums, um, right now they're projected to increase 6%. We have it budgeted at 5%. Um, basically this is, um, we have our union contracts that if we have a higher increase than 5%, we go back to the negotiation table, we make plan changes. So right now, um, we've got a option that the plan changes will get down to 6% and that will be acceptable because I'll show you on the next slide, um, the way our cap increases that will fall into our dollar amount. Last year we budgeted 5%, but the increase actually came at 3.9. So that kind of carries forward. Also, um, impact to us is that we have an increase in both the IPRs and police and fire pension contributions. Um, and those are, the rates up there are what the city needs to contribute. So this is just, uh, showing of our health insurance caps. The bottom line shows you the dollar amounts that we need to fall into, um, to keep, you know, the, that we've negotiated. So like I said, with the proposed, um, 6% increase, um, those dollar amounts on those health plans are falling into that. Um, and then this year for FY19, um, all the employees are contributing 6%. This spreadsheet is just going to show you the general fund revenues for FY19. They're, um, 12, 12 million, 784,000. Um, again, the majority of that is, um, 51% of that's property tax. Um, you'll see there's a little bit, um, increase in intergovernmental. Those are our grant funds we're getting from the federal, like for the safer grant. And then the other decreases in that miscellaneous, basically that's just the change in capital budgeting in the auditorium now. In the prior year when we had Venue Works, we budgeted their revenues in that miscellaneous line. This year with American Music Festival, we're just paying them, we're just having expense, we're not having any revenue come in. And then this is showing you the general fund expenditures. You can see our revenue, which was 12.7 million, the expenses are 19.5. Um, my next slide will show you the transfers that we make into the general fund so that we are covering all these expenses. Um, but this is just broken down by all the different departments, um, that get paid out of the general fund. Again, you see that decrease of the auditorium and that's just a different way that we're, um, doing the budget this year. Um, basically, the, just like increases. And overall, we have a $250, $251,000 increase. So when we look at the overall general fund, um, you got to look at the transfers that we bring into the general fund, 7.5 million. Of that, we're bringing in about 3.4 million from our local option sales tax, our employee benefit, the emergency levy. Those get taken into a special revenue fund. All of those in turn get right around and back transferred to the general fund. Um, we also get transfers in from our enterprise fund, sewer, solid waste, VM and, or vehicle maintenance and property maintenance. Those total up to a million. So as you can see, for the fiscal year 19, um, we're just going to have a slight increase in our 1,000,000 dollars where we'll have revenues budgeted over our expenditures. So our sewer fund, we've talked about this, um, it's budgeted at a 3% increase to the sewer user fees as of July 1st. Um, this is just caused by the increase in operating costs and then the anticipated future test requirements that we need to comply with the sewer separation. Solid waste is budgeted for a 25 cent increase, which is 1.8%. That, the monthly bill will increase to 14.25 from $14. And again, we've got the dollar increase per ton for tipping fees. And the, the recycling fee, which is all included in that 1425. This slide's just showing you the CIP projects that, um, will be approved in this budget. Most of these, again, you've seen, you've, we've gone over with, um, in individual department funds. Does anyone have any questions? Okay.
Is posted online?
Your CIP, is it part of it? Open Gov has the full, uh, budget within it. Do you have the CIP posted online?
Um, if not, I can get it out. I think we did, but the five-year plan.
And is it posted, uh, overall, that after this?
Yeah, we do that afterwards.
I, I guess, I do have a question, um, on that, the parking lot projects. That's, that is not the, the one down on Fifth and Valley, is it? You have 610, you have attributed that?
Oh, sorry.
Because I thought we, we discussed that not being done at the, at this point. It's not approved.
It's, it's budgeted, you're, you're, you're planning on moving forward if we can get an acceptable arrangement and they actually do the project, which I would also say is probably fair, fairly threatened with the state historic tax credits.
Okay. I'd hate to lose a better house to pull up for you to tell.
The Recplex one though has been pulled and that one should be crossed out, but I had made all the copies.
Okay.
It's not on the PowerPoint.
We had, we originally budgeted for parking lot improvements out at the Recplex, uh, and before we got to the end, I had recommended to pull that one off because we didn't have any defined, we had in line.
Okay. Thank you.
So this is just a quick overview of the hotel motel tax. We have budgeted 785,000. Again, this is split 70% to the city and 30% to the convention and visitors bureau, up to 700,000. And then after that, we get 60 and then 40. Our total expenditures we're budgeting out of there are 777,000. And you can see the different activities, um, that make up that. Again, I think most, all of these have been covered in the individual. We have a 4.1 budgeted amount for revenues, which is a decrease from last year of 90,000. Um, we are budgeting expenditures a little bit higher than that at 4.2 million. We do have a, a fund balance there, so we're just using some of that fund balance for the project. You can see 2.3 million is going to be going to the general fund for the property tax relief and then a million for the police officers, um, and then equipment. And then the other items that we've determined to budget out of sales tax are all listed The last slide we have is just showing our legal debt margin. Um, our goal is to keep it at 70% or below. So we're projected to be right at 69.72 next year, which is right under that 70%.
Yes, sir.
Leon Chehan, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street. As you well know, I have lots of problems with a budget. I guess I'll start out by saying I'm not arguing about paper, especially whether the paper should be 10 cents or 10 cents. Part of the problem I have with how the city's functions are defined is I own one piece of property where I live and I'm really paying property taxes for two homes. And that's disturbing. Before I get into some of the exact problems, there's rumors about the end of the community that I'm here to tell, uh, don't know what I'm talking about. I graduated from high school and college with a 4.0 grade average. I got a degree in accounting from Iowa Westland. I've worked in private industry for over a decade. Um, I, I know what I'm talking about here and there's some real problems right off the top. When you include your cars, you include debt as revenue. And part of the problem is what you consider an income statement is really a combination cash flow and income statement. I'm going to tell you, when my car lays over and dies and it costs me $600 and I have to charge it to my credit card, that ain't revenue, folks. The paper comes calling. The other big problem I have with what happens here is the recognition of abatements, assessment reductions and other economic development tools. You're showing your tax revenues net. All the numbers you see are net. And it's even worse because you're actually in the, this time. You're using, two-thirds of the money you're spending is coming from other taxing authorities that have to make that money up otherwise. And that comes back to haunt me. So from your standpoint, no, you know, TIF isn't costing you $2.8 million, it's costing me $2.8 million. Just getting right to, in your statements, and I, I spent about five hours looking at what was online and my wife will attest to the fact that I was down there reading over the documents that you had. It's enough to make me glasses. Consider economic development and what I consider economic development are two different things. I went through, I talked to the assessor today, um, did some research. On the charts that you had there, it's hardly readable, but I looked it up online, your TIF budget is $2.8 million. The abatement, it's hard to get over, there's some $400 of property that is in some sort of, some sort of abatement process. I just kind of do a catch-all number, about 3% of that will be what you are actually abating. And that varies year to year and I just didn't have the time to go through. So that's about a million dollars. Again, I consider that economic development. The tourism department at the Chamber of Commerce, they get about $300,000 a year. The way I look at it, that's just an advertising department for the casino. That should be the casino's problem, not mine. That money can, under state law, be used for general fund purposes and you're not doing it. And that's about the money and the levies that you apply to my taxes. The next is really controversial. Grograder Burlington gets about $600,000 plus or minus. It comes from what's called casino head tax. Now people will say they own the license. When that, that was passed, it was quite important. That somehow became a wholly owned subsidiary of the Chamber of Commerce, which is a private entity and the taxpayers were never compensated. And quite frankly, I don't recognize that transaction. The $600,000 that's going to Grograder Burlington is corporate welfare that's coming out of the taxpayer's pocket. Um, and that means the casino and the, uh, Fun City. Some years back, and I was trying to find the information, but about 2009, they got an assessment reduction amounting to $10 million. That's a hit in property taxes and it affects the schools, the county and the city of $400,000. You're trying to do with that? I really don't understand what you're trying to do with that. It seems to me you're holding that for some sort of future convention, hotel, some sort of riverfront complex. But I consider that corporate welfare. Because you're holding that for future development, what is that? If you were to, that building would have been gone a long time ago. So what you're talking about, just the items that I discussed, is $5.8 million of corporate welfare. Now you compare that number to the, your tax, property tax revenue and that's a big chunk. Then tonight, I talked about what you're spending on a federal, in the latest bond What, what that means, adding that to the other numbers, your biggest single expenditure, what you're proving tonight is corporate welfare. It's over $7 million. It's more you spend for police, more than you spend for fire, more than you spend for anything else. The utility franchise tax, it's the corporate welfare that's eating you alive. And in the data that was portrayed here, you showed how the property tax valuations outside of TIF areas are going down. The TIF is a cancer. You don't collect tax revenue from that. You take the tax revenue from, and then on other projects, handouts, rebates to Randy Weingard, about $200,000 was the last number I saw. It's eating us alive. I know people say, well, we have to grow the community. You've been doing this, I've been coming down to these meetings for over 20 years and Kathleen will answer that. And it's the biggest item in your budget. I'm not anti-government. I understand there are things that government can do better than individuals. I don't want to have to scoop the street out in front of my property. It's an old four-lane highway. That's a lot of work. I'm happy to have the government do it. But I'm not anti-government, as lenders of last resort or venture capitalist, you're not trained to do that. Yet that's the biggest item in your budget. And on a lesser note, one of the things I noticed going through the prior budgets is on your transit service. For every $10 you spend on, you're only getting $1 in the fare box. And one of the biggest problems there, and I'm pro-public transit, but to make public transit work, you have to have buses or whatever form of transportation talk about, go where people want to go, when they want to go. people want to go, when they want to go. And I'm of the opinion that there's some sort of idea that I don't know about, that probably should be near the hospital, or the college, or perhaps Westland Mall, I'm not sure. And the routes branch out from that. You do the exact opposite. They branch out from downtown. Your biggest market is going to be people needing to go to the hospital or going to the community college. And yet that's poorly structured. What else I have? Oh, yes. There's been a lot of concern about crime in this community. Yet we're still spending a million dollars a year, and that's my estimate, that you're not going to find it in any presentation there, enforcing antiquated laws and rules. Main one is the evil weed. Now, here we have something that is legal in other states, and you're spending a million dollars trying to control it. There's no law that says you have to spend one dime for that kind of law. And states that do have legalized marijuana, medical or otherwise, the opioid epidemic is less. When you have limited resources, I don't care what somebody does smoking weed. The only thing I've ever seen endangered is a bag of potato chips. But I don't want to. What I'm interested in is if you have running gun battles down the street, yeah, I want the cops there for that. But if somebody chooses to ingest a poison, I use smoked Camel cigarettes, Marlboro. I'm paying, paying for that. I just don't see spending a million dollars. Not when money is as tight, not when you have chuck holes that'll knock the front end right out from under my car. I want the money spent on chuck holes, not some kid doing the evil weed. And I'll leave it at that.
I want to know when you want to meet, and I'm going to give you my card. My email's on here, and you can let me know. I'm going to be in town for the next few weeks, and I really want to meet with the council, okay? Because I was told by Jim that the only money that was given to the downtown partners at all was $15,000 a year. Were you available this week or next?
Oh, I'll get ahold of you. I just want, I was just thinking for budget, anything else on the budget, but yeah, make no mistake about it all. I'll get a type of.
Got my questions answered?
Let's do this.
Your Honor, I have a motion to close.
Second.
Kathleen?
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Second. Let's vote on it. Kathleen?
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, we have one last resolution?
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the Iowa Economic Development Authority.
Second.
Second. Zach James?
All right. I've got some things here for me and SCS. Do you want any more things?
Or as I like to refer to them as, Batman.
There's a story behind that. I have a story behind it. Thanks, Zach. Maybe, let me possibly give one back to these guys. I think I've got an extra. There we go. All right. For Opportunity Zone nomination, this is a new program that was established from the Federal Tax Cut and Jobs Act of 2017 to create this program called Opportunity Zones. It's basically, it's a tax incentive for people investing low income census tracts. The Tax Cut Act authorized states, gave them 180 days to designate certain census tracts within their state to be eligible for this incentive. And what it offers is people to invest in census tracts in your community, they can utilize capital gains that they got from some kind of job creation, job retention, real estate. It's not really defined very well, but somehow invest in these census tracts, they get a deferment on their capital gains tax, and then a credit after a certain period of time of investing, and then also any new tax could be, be subject to capital gains from that investment, would not have to be paid capital gains tax. They would only get taxed on their initial investment that was already going to be taxed through capital gains. Somewhat complicated. But regardless, this is an application to Iowa Economic Development Authority. They have 239 census tracts that are eligible within the state. They can only select 60 across the entire state, and Burlington has four that are shown on that map in green that are, meet the criteria, and then they have one, which is, they consider a contiguous tract, it doesn't actually meet the regular guidance, but if it were to assigned as one of the Opportunity Zone census tracts, they could also include tract six. So the reason for the resolution tonight to authorize the mayor is that we were just notified of this opportunity February 23rd, and these applications are due on March 19th. And that's the city governments in our area that have eligible census tracts along with economic development groups and trying to get these applications together. So your next opportunity to approve one of these would be on the 19th, which is the same day that it's due. So we were hoping just to have the mayor authorize to put his name on an application that we was submitting. Partnership staff today, just to go over some of the questions that are in here, and just to get information that we would need to fill in the application, but yes.
There's no financial commitment on the city's part for this?
No, this is, and there's no, this is a federal incentive, so it's, there's no local. It's basically applying to the state that would be eligible.
Who funnels the investors?
That's a good question. It's a local marketing effort, I guess, once you get, if you're designated, I guess, it would be on a local level. I'm not sure if the state would be a partner in that or not. We contacted them with questions, how they would determine what's eligible, and they're still a little unsure at this point about all the details.
Do you know how the new market tax credit was done?
How it was?
Was it, how was that marketed, or?
I think that's up to individual entities really to market that as an opportunity.
Barely comparable to that type of program?
The census tracts that would be eligible would be very similar to what's eligible in the new market tax credit, which there's a few in Burlington. They're the same, maybe the same ones.
Mrs. Hall? Can I come to the?
Wonderful. I see my buildings here, and item number two, dial soap, that's my building. No one ever contacts me when they put my name in my building in all of these documents. I'm wondering why.
Just to clarify, these are census tracts.
Mrs. Hall? Can we address that after the meeting?
I would love to address it at some point, sure.
Okay, just not during the meeting though, right now.
Let's address it, though. Let's.
All right, go ahead, Zach.
I don't know if I had anything else at this point. If you guys have questions, I can. Would send them to the state where they could potentially designate some of these census tracts.
So I want to make sure I understand this. So somebody devests, has a capital gain, they take that gain, they reinvest that into one of our tracks?
Some project within.
Sure.
A tract if it were eligible.
Whatever they make on that investment is more valuable.
At a decreased amount.
At a decreased amount. Perfect. Wanted to make sure I understood that.
Yep. 15% decrease on that initial.
That's a lot.
Any other questions, President?
That's all a federal incentive, there's no local incentive.
Okay, thanks.
I'm good. Do you have a question regarding this project?
Yes.
Here's the thing, tonight's not the night to, anytime we have a council meeting, that's not the night to try to work out problems.
I've tried to work this out many times.
Hold on a minute. When we have a meeting, it's not the time to work out problems that you can get worked out, I'm talking.
I can't get them worked out.
It's not the time to work out problems that you can get worked out with departments and department heads during the day.
Mayor McCambo. And over, and over, with all due respect.
With all due respect, I still want to work with you, but having an attitude coming down with the attitude, it's really hard to deal with you.
I would appreciate that. But I have contact, yes, I realize that you're being frustrated, but my frustration is well warranted, okay? Everybody has my phone number, okay? No one ever called me when they put my building in all of these documents.
But, Mrs. Hall, your building downtown is in an area, so I mean, that's just the way it is. But we'll deal with that, we'll deal with that later.
I'm Miss Hall, Miss Lee, okay?
Do you guys have any other questions for Zach James?
I do. Where did you get my building on this list?
My house is in there too, ma'am.
My house is in here, too.
My house is in there.
Are there any other questions for Zach James, Council?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Jesus. Let's vote, Kathleen.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye. Park West LLC.
Second.
Sir.
I want to get an overview of what that is.
This is an application for workforce housing tax incentives. Don't know if it'll actually be submitted or accepted based on some programs. For contractors that build at least four single-family homes or one multifamily building containing three or more units, where the project cost does not exceed 200,000 per unit for new construction or 250 for rehab, tax incentives through the state. It's an investment tax credit up to a maximum of 10% directly related to construction. Build a $200,000 house, you can capture 15,000 in tax, investment tax credit, which are fully transferable, and also refund of state sales, service, and use tax paid during construction. When I contacted the state about the application or the resolution, just to go over, they are changing them from a first-come, first-served basis to a competitive one, and they do not have any of those guidelines established. So this is for Park West LLC, Mr. Cale's project. It's kind of in a holding pattern until they determine what those requirements are. They also intentionally change the, but this just lists that the TIF rebate is the local match, there's no other requirement from the city to contribute towards it.
I guess one of the concerns that I have on the, in a frontline, that we give money to millionaires. I'm not a believer in trickle-down theory. It would be nice, when we bring jobs to this community, that they pay a living wage so people can afford to buy homes without all these limitations. And I know this is probably not any out-of-pocket to the city, as I understand it. I just simply object to the fact that whenever we do create new jobs here, the first thing we have to do is find low-income housing assistance. That's just not the way to grow the community.
No questions.
Okay, let's go to work.
Motion to close.
We're ready to vote.
Oh, we're ready to vote, sorry.
Phillips?
I got lost.
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Been easy, but we did it. Mr. Teslin, closing remarks.
Comments from the audience? Any further comments?
That was really nice, I almost made it through that. It wasn't for you med school kids. Comments from the audience? Yes, sir. You first. And I would have missed out on that, too.
How is it going on the building I knew my place in Bridge?
Mount Pleasant Street Bridge, you're planning on going to bid in May. Construction maybe begin in June. That's being optimistic, but that's.
The yellow lines down, because last time I was here, the guy, and there's a stretch where you don't have, where you don't have that on the street. And that, that needs to be done.
Around the corner there, and I think that was talked about as in modifying what we paint this cycle this summer.
Okay, now, the only way I can describe things in here, I lived here all my life, is photographic memory. You gotta be patient. You go past the bridge on the Seventh Street Bridge, you go past that, you go past your old high school, you go past Walgreens up the hill, then there's a, that hill, are you ever gonna redo that street?
You don't have that on your, I don't think you have that on your five-year plan.
It's Maple, it's Maple going down the hill west of summer.
I don't, I don't think that's on the five-year plan.
Excuse me, Nick, I want you to pay attention to this, please. I want you focused. Go ahead.
The last thing is Cascade Bridge. It would be nice, we get that done. Maybe we have a telethon like Jerry Lewis did to raise money to get that bridge done. But we do need to get it done. We do need to get it done. In there, like I said, last time I was there, five people pulled up where they have the cannons, and it would be beautiful for, they'd be going in there, because that is a beautiful park to go into.
Yes, it is.
And I think you all do a good job. I know seeing new faces in this council. And I wasn't here, but I know it's late. Happy New Year. Happy Easter, and.
Valentine's Day.
Valentine's Day, thank you. But I would like to see Cascade Bridge done, and I think we all want to go home, and I'll give it back.
Mayor's award winner, just want to pass that out.
Okay. He's also the best dishwasher this side of Mississippi.
Is that right?
Yeah.
All right.
Any, any other questions from the audience, yes, sir, or comments?
Robert Craig Street, 10 North Fifth. This one's for Nick. Current overpass there over the freeway. Patch road, every single time you fix it, it's just rough again two days later.
It's called the road monster.
The road monster?
We have the road monster. It eats the stuff out of the potholes.
It's eating something. Uh, the other thing I wanted to say was, uh, it was really awesome to be here, to see Jesse Petty get appreciated. Uh, I recently met him, you guys can probably hear more about that later. If anybody knows where I can score a rickshaw. I don't want to buy one, but I want to borrow one. And you're going to make this guy's day, so you'll make my day, because I, I can talk to him for an hour, seriously. If you've never had your shoes shined, F and M Bank, I'm going to plug that a little bit. Whatever life's thrown at him, it doesn't matter. And, and he gets it that, you know, life itself is that gift that makes all other gifts possible. Just a beautiful person, I really appreciate that you recognize him tonight. And he's gonna, he's, somebody told me he's going to be on TV, is this what he's talking about? Probably.
Anybody else from the audience? I'll tell you what, what a fantastic audience you have been Leon. And you too, Rob. Okay, Mr. Tisland? Kathleen? All right.
Neighborhood with paint, or soffit work, or landscaping, consider the Healthy Neighborhood Grant. I'm going to do it myself, I've got three other neighbors on board, but it takes five people. And you just fill out this quick five-page application, and it's a 50-50 match. So if you spend a thousand dollars on paint, soffit work, and you get 500 back. Rock Eye, so if you saw, if you got Sunday's papers sticking around, look at the editorial there. Shamrock Shuffle's this Saturday, so lace up your shoes. And if you love the color green, which who doesn't love green, come on, unless you don't like peas or something. But Shamrock Shuffle proceeds go to the youth in our committee, communities. My mustache.
Gausler, Phillips?
All right, well, uh, our national, or regional, or actually local crisis is over. I'm glad to thank the media for their help. The shad are gone, so it's not so smelly down on the riverfront. So appreciate everybody's help coming.
It's been a tough week for a lot of families in Burlington, dealing with sickness and death. So, uh, just know that, uh, there are people that support you and hold you up in their prayers, et cetera. And, uh, I want to know, I want people to know that I am one of those people. Uh, just glad to see one of the mayor's award winners, it's always good to see you, Dean. Shayhan. You know, you come down here, and you've always got something to say, and usually it's disagreement. But I'll tell you, uh, you're welcome in these, these chambers as far as, as long as I'm in here, anytime. Because even though we do have disagreements, it's, uh. Some people need to be silenced, don't leave it at that. But, uh, I appreciate you, I just want you to know that. And Chief, uh, we're getting, we're coming down to the, we're coming down to the back end, my friend. Yeah, we've, we've, we've been through some good times, my friend, and, uh, God bless you, brother.
At 7:00 PM is the Star of Snow Bowl, so. Yep, gotta get down there, enjoy that, it's a three, three-day event. And then, of course, in the middle of all the, the partying and stuff, you have to get up at 10:00 AM and run at Crapo Park at the Shamrock Dome, so.
Rotary Art Auction is Thursday. Got a couple hundred thousand dollars in art coming in, so anybody who's interested. There's some really great art that was curated today, I saw the list. Tickets are 20 bucks a person, 30 bucks for a couple, that's all your drinks and orders. I'm sorry, it's at the Burlington Apartments over here on Thursday. Starts at 6:00, auction starts at 7:15. Uh, my wife is working with me because, Chief, they sent out the invitation for your, uh, reception. And, uh, it's on the same day that we're having a baby, but I told her I couldn't miss the reception, so. Afternoon when that's taking place, but I wanted to let you know that you're on the, you're on the calendar.
It's also the same day as.
I may need protection when I go back, though, so.
It's also the same day, I gotta say, as extreme midget wrestling downtown in the auditorium.
James Purdough, point guard.
I have the radio on Wednesday. I have nothing else for tonight.
For tonight? Well, all right, then, I think we're good to go. Good to see you tonight, Zach James. There's nothing else, who's going to take us out, MPT? A second? Yeah, slam it down, go ahead, shut it.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.